Safety, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
President.
Greg Miller.
President.
Jim Skinner.
President.
Okay, we have the minutes from the November 24th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of November 24th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are passed. Next, we have the claims that Carol's prepared for us.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the claims as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, did we have any public comments? Okay. Okay, we'll start with department reports. Police Department, Chief Shoemaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As far as department reports, we'll do the stops. We have the stop sign at Clay and Morrison. But first, and I know you haven't seen this yet.
Thank you.
Every year, we talk about the contracts for downtown parking, and we forget to bring it to your attention. And there's a couple of things that need to, I think, happen tonight. I've talked to Alicia earlier. What we're wanting to do, on the first page of the ordinance, where the monthly rental amount shall be determined by the resolution of the Board of Works in Public Safety. And so what we're asking, if you flip to the next page, is one of the contracts, we're tracking everybody down monthly to collect the payment for the parking spots. What we're asking, what we will ask officially, if there was some sort of consensus tonight for Alicia to prepare a resolution for the final meeting this year, we're looking at trying to get people to pay for the whole year for the parking spot. And so we thought potentially a discount, what's written here is 10%. It's up to you if anything were to happen. But what we are asking is a discount if it was paid in full for the year, and putting that into the contract, that would require your approval. The other thing highlighted, number four, it's a new addition. What we're having now is people not wanting to pay. And I don't know if the city, I know Alicia and I talked, it is a contract, we could go after these individuals in civil court for this. What we're asking in this case is if the rent is not paid in as late 30 days, that the contract be terminated, and then normal enforcement of those parking spaces would occur. So that's something that you would have to agree to as well. The rest of the copies are, there's three parking lots, North Jackson Street, Clinton Street, and then North Columbia Street. So there's three different contracts that we put out, and this is the time of the year that we put them out. So for tonight, I would like, if you did agree to these additions, consensus enough for Alicia to prepare that resolution.
One question I would have is, are you still keeping the option? Will there be a monthly rate and an annual? Are you just asking to do away with the monthly and just do an annual?
No, we would still do the monthly. It would still be payable by the first of each month. We're just looking at, with the amount of contracts and parking spaces, to give some sort of incentive to just pay in January for the whole year. And what we're having now, honestly, is the county lot is open, and people are parking in it, and it's not being, and so it's not being, they don't have an ordinance at this point. And so we have parking, but we're trying to track people down to pay. They don't want to pay anymore. So we either, I don't know if it's your, you know, if you want to go after, I think these are yearly contracts that they're violating. You know, we don't think we want to go after them. That's up to you all, but we would do-
Because we asked them to sign an annual contract.
Yeah, it is an annual contract.
So what do you do, like, if they don't pay the $15? What do you do? Do you warn them? Do you contact them? Or do you just-
Well, we haven't had anybody not pay and still use the spot. So we really haven't had that issue. Yeah, but we do have people that would like spots. It's actually, there's a lot of spots that people want that we can't give them. So we'd like to somehow get the contract terminated in the language in here, so we could just do it, terminate it, and then be able to rent that spot to somebody else without going through Alicia, City Court, or I don't even know if it would go, it'd probably be County Court, wouldn't it?
It would be a small claims court.
Yeah.
But we're gonna take them to small claims court for, what, it's like $15 a month? So you did the math earlier, Chief Shoemaker. So it's just not that much that we would be going after. You're gonna spend more in legal fees to go after them than you would recoup. So it would just be a deterrent reason to go after them.
So if you don't want, the discount just helps with our code enforcement tracking these people down if they would pay for the year. But we definitely want to be able to terminate the contract after non-payment, which has not been in the contract.
So if we put it in there, and they don't pay, like, would you give them, like, 15 days to pay?
So what we would do is, we would basically just give them notice, and if they don't pay, I think it says that if they don't pay within 30 days, then they would have the contract terminated. So once they didn't pay, we would send them a notice and just let them know that they're in violation of their contract. And if they don't pay within 30 days, that the contract is terminated. And then if they don't pay, the contract is terminated. And then at that point, we can give them a citation or tow them for parking in a spot that is not their spot anymore. And that would just allow us to sign a contract or sign a lease for someone else who wanted that spot, then they could annually, you know, they could get a lease for the rest of the year for that. And then the 10% discount for an annual payment would be worth its 10%, just in the amount of time that code enforcement has spent trying to track down these people to get them to pay.
Do you have anyone that does rent every month for the year?
They all do, generally. It's just, this is the first time with that county lot opening, we've seen them just leave, like, the parking garage and park over at the-
But they've never had the option to go ahead and make an annual payment?
No.
I like the idea.
They can. I mean, I don't know exactly. I think-
It's always an option. It's just nobody ever exercises it, because it's a month, it's a monthly payment. So they just pay the $15 a month. But now that that lot is open, they're parking over there, not paying the $15, they're not getting any sort of citation or anything, because they're not parked in a spot that they're, you know. And so we're just out. We can't re-lease the space to somebody else, because we've got a lease agreement with that person, but then they're not paying for it.
Is there something in here that says, what if they want to get out of it, let's say six months later? I don't know, I haven't read this.
I don't think there's any termination provision in there, but I mean, practically speaking, if they wanted to terminate, then they could just not pay, and we terminated after 30 days. So that would allow them to get out of it if they wanted to.
I would like to make the motion that we rewrite this to the point where if they don't pay, then the contract is, that they don't longer have a chance to park there. I think the recommendation of the chief.
And also add to that, that we have that also available on a yearly, on an annual basis, too, that we add that to. And I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that, because then we can at least start pushing the contracts out, and then you can ratify it once the resolution.
Yeah, so the resolution will just be regarding the amount of the contract, so the 10% off. We don't need to include the other language in there, because that'll be in the contract itself, which you guys have approved.
Thank you.
Last thing I have, or really, the other department reports, we have taken, real quick, we've taken over the intern, you know, obviously Brett Barton has passed away, and we were asked by the high school to take the intern that he had, and we were glad to do that. So we have a senior that will be spending a couple hours a day at the police department, started today, and will be with us till May. As you saw, on the slow news day on November 20th, we had a resident who was reporting some issues on Clay Street, north, or I'm sorry, south of Morrison Street. I've reviewed that address. We had hit and run in 2015, did not have another crash until 2020, '21, '22, and '24. And I've put in a breakdown of those incidents, of those incidents. The complainant himself was at fault for failing to yield the right of way of the stop sign that you already have there at that intersection. When he mentioned in the news article that there was a recent crash, I don't know what the recent crash was, because the one in '24 was his crash that he failed to yield to a vehicle that was turning in front of him. No stop sign would have stopped that, because the stop sign that he had to stop, or the car he had to yield to, he did not stop for. The others are hit and runs, side swipes, speed was not determined to be a factor in those. When we look at the data from the last five years, 2021 to today, 2025, we've had three crashes near that intersection, all with property damage. To compare, the entire length of Clay Street from Kiger to Alhambra has had 32 crashes in that same time period, and most of these are at intersections that have four-way stop signs or lights. Walnut and Clay is the worst intersection on Clay Street for crashes, and it is operated and controlled by a stoplight. We conducted 20 extra patrols from October 31st through November 10th. Six of those patrols were during daylight hours, 14 were nighttime. Five traffic stops were conducted. That's 20 officers taken off the road for 30 minutes. Five traffic stops were conducted. Three were for the violations of the stop sign that's already there, one for not using a turn signal, and one for a headlight. None were stopped for speeding. It's my recommendation that a stop sign is not necessary at this location. Thousands of vehicles travel Clay Street each year. The road is the same width from Alhambra to Kiger, with areas such as Armstrong to Harvard Terrace that are as congested with the one-sided parking. However, one-sided parking is a traffic calming method and is proven to reduce vehicle and pedestrian conflicts. On the back of this page, you'll see the map of the crashes and the map of the complainant's address. He has ample space off the back of his property to add gravel, which may have already been done. I don't know if a permit was pulled. But it should be noted that these complaints only started when a citation was issued on October 14th, 2025, for parking in green space. And to say to the news media, recent crashes, someone's going to be killed, all these are just salacious comments. You know, the media never met with me. I think they contacted the mayor. And so I've included the crashes. It's kind of hard to see. I can send you the color copy, but you can see the little dots at the top. All of those are clustered at Clay and Walnut, and Washington Avenue, and Washington Street. And so the board can obviously act on its own pleasure to make it a four-way stop. I don't know if the complainant is here. Doesn't look like it. I don't know if Brian wants to mention anything. I mean, it's unfortunate that these crashes, these side swipes have occurred. It's a thin road. One of the crashes was because a driver thought they could make it with another car coming, and it had nothing to do with speed. It's just unfortunate. That's why we have insurance. But adding a stop sign is not going to, not going to solve the problem. The gravel will solve this problem for off-street parking. So that's my recommendation. I don't know if you have any more questions on that, or if Brian, I don't know if Brian has anything to add with his, you have anything? Any questions?
Well, we appreciate you looking into this, and this is very thorough. And, you know, numbers don't lie. And I think you're correct. The complaints only started after green space parking complaint.
We get a lot of complaints on green space parking, but many cities around the country don't, it's just tacky to park in the grass. It creates muddy, dirty areas. And I know we get a lot of complaints for that, but it's code enforcement's job. Now, we've worked with them to increase their warnings after the third quarter. I talked to the mayor about this, and we're continuing working with them to educate more. But they also have a job to do, and they've been doing it pretty well, enough that that's all the complaints we get now, is we're doing too much. So if you want a stop sign, it's up to you, but-
I think we're gonna, in my, I make a, I make a motion that we go with the chief's recommendation that a stop sign is not necessary at this location, and the due diligence of his officers and the time they put into this, and the documentation to show why it's not necessary, is why we have this guy in charge and the police department we have doing this job.
Yeah, I would agree. I think due diligence has been done in here. And I think the question that was brought up that included the school bus, I would say your same reasoning for not putting that stop sign there would also be the same reason that that would not also be an issue there, that particular corner. So I would second the motion for that.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, for all your work on this. You've done a lot of work on it. And like you said, I think, you know, part of it was just, you know, not understanding that you cannot move your vehicles to the back of your house without having gravel or stone there, and-
If you do, I've never spoken to him about this complaint. He's never complained to the police department. If you do talk to him, and he wants to meet with me, and I can go over all this.
Okay.
With him.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for your recommendation, all your work on this.
I have a band concert, and I have an officer outside if you need anybody, you know, security-wise. There's some rough crowd out here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Fire Department, Chief Stedham.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I really don't have a whole lot for you tonight, just some updates on the new engine. They sent me some new pictures. I'll get those posted hopefully tonight. It's in the stage of getting painted. So a lot of the inside of the compartments are being painted right now. They're expected by the end of this week, first of next week, the engine itself will actually be painted. So we're just moving along with that. I was not able to attend in person to the meeting for Station 4. I know Greg was there. I know Rob was there for the second meeting. But I did attend virtually, and it sounds like they're kind of really at a standstill, I think, right now with the weather. They still gave us a projected date of September 22nd, I believe is what the date they told us, that they are expected to be done. And then, as I was not on the meeting with Greg and Rob, but I do want to make sure that I voiced my concerns, that we, I have talked to Alicia. Alicia's been working on it a little bit about who's going to be the one to manage and oversee the inspections. And I think that in my conversation with Alicia, just as message back, of course, she's got a draft already ready.
I do have a draft ready. Since that time, there was some discussion that the Area Plan Commission would continue to oversee it, but that Rob would be doing the inspections on their behest. The question that I posed to the mayor was regarding the fire inspections, and we had talked previously about having the city fire inspections done when we have city fire code being followed. So I, at this point, just need to have direction on whether or not we need to have an interlocal agreement regarding the city fire inspections for that, or if we are good to go with APC overseeing it and Rob doing the inspections, or how we want to proceed.
I think, Alicia, if we remember in our contracts, when we wrote those contracts for our townships, that it covers us, that they're going to follow standards of the city-
City code, right. The question is-
Part of that is there, that is Washington Township there.
Right. I believe that that's correct. And then it's just a question of, is the Area Plan Commission going to do those inspections or facilitate that, or is the city fire department going to do the fire code inspections?
So we definitely want to change to that. Any coverage area that Frankfurt Fire covers, I believe that, you know, our fire inspector needs to be doing those inspections.
Yeah, so I think what we need to do at this point is just tweak the draft, so that it's not all inspections are going to be done by the city, even though practically speaking, Rob is going to be doing the inspections, but they're going to be facilitated by the Area Plan Commission, so they wouldn't be the city's responsibility, technically speaking, but that the fire code inspections would be the city's responsibility, and separate those two things out to meet both needs.
Perfect.
Okay, I will get that changed.
Yeah, I think the meeting that I was having, I think, Rob, you can agree with that, that Kevin would be doing those inspections along with you, as far as fire code would be concerned with that, so.
Anything above ceiling, anything fire-related as far as fire suppression systems, anything to do with fire code that we get called on, Kevin would be there also.
Okay, all right. So I will make sure that that interlocal agreement pertains to the fire code specifically, and not necessarily the rest of the building code.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Last thing is, we got Engine 1 back finally. It's been gone for about two and a half weeks with some issues. Every one of our trucks, I think I told you this the last time we met, every one of our trucks is going down to get repaired for, after their pump tests. They had some minor things that need to be fixed. They still work, they still pump. It's not like we're not being able to do our job, but there's just some things that we need to make sure that we get caught up with, with an FPA standards for that, after that pump test. So it's backing up and operational, and got a couple more left to go for the year. That's all I got.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Street Department, Superintendent Kilman.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Last week, we rewarded the 50/50 matching grant for the CCMG, the Community Crossings, for $449,702.50, giving us a total of $899,405 to dedicate to paving in 2026. My plan to put the scope of work out to bid tonight, but the snow over the past two weeks derailed that timeline. We'll have that ready for you on the 22nd meeting to put out, and hopefully have it under contract by February. Because we're adding the new ADA, I don't want to, I'm holding off on specifying what roadways we're actually doing, just in case the bids come back higher, to leave some flexibility there. We have 300 tons of salt being delivered tomorrow, starting tomorrow, be done by the 16th. I increased that budget line this year. And after this initial delivery, I'll probably order some more with that funds that we have. Given the trends over the past several years with more freezing rain and less accumulating snow, I'm kind of looking into switching from untreated, is what we currently get now, into treated salt. There's some benefits with treated salt. Right now, with our untreated salt, about 15 degrees, it stops working. So we keep having to spread more and more and more to try to keep up. With treated salt, it can go down into the negatives. Plus, with the untreated, when you drop it, it bounces. The treated kind of just soaks right in, and it works a lot more effectively. I am looking into, I don't know if there's any stormwater drains issues with MS4, so I'm working on that. But other cities and DOTs use it. I don't think that there's an issue with that. And tomorrow, a few of the crew and I will be heading to the city of Delphi in the morning, hosted by Mike Braun for the Community Crossings Matching Grant to get the big check.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
And for taking some of them with you. I think that's good.
Yep. Other than that, that's all I've got, unless you've got any questions.
Okay, good work.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work during the snowstorms. I said, whatever it is that we got, thank you.
Whenever you salt it.
Okay, Building Services, who's going first?
Sorry about the late addition of the permit report for November, the 25 permit report, just under $1.5 million in value. Biggest chunk of that would be the eight new homes going in for Habitat. We have a couple major, or a total, a couple total renovations. We have a couple minor renovations, and we still are dealing with some additions on some existing structures. We do have another property that we've been looking at as far as not being habitable. I know the tenants went to court today for a damage hearing, have not followed up yet with the landlord. I plan on doing that tomorrow to see how all that turned out. But we are looking at possibly taking another house, possession of another home. We will not know more probably till first of the year. But that's all I've got.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Don, what do you have for us?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. First, I want to kind of follow up on the conversation that Scott was having on putting gravel in for people's parking. We look at the impervious surface ratio a little bit differently than maybe what the county or what they look at doing. And we believe that if they use a certain amount of gravel that's non-compactable, then we still consider that being able to drain the water through, because water gets through it. I know that the county pretty much says that, hey, if it's gravel, if it's hard surface, it'll make a difference. But we believe certain stone still allows the water to go through. So that makes it a little bit easier to, for the people to put their gravel in, and we insist it in the back versus being in the front. But it's because of the increased amount of people calling about it, we try to do that and look in a manner that, as long as they don't use compactable gravel, we allow it to happen and not be concerned about the impervious surface ratio of 50%. So just wanted to throw that out. The second thing, today, we're getting really, really close. Rocky, Rissy 7 is, has 12 lots, one lot, or 13 lots. One lot has actually been purchased by a local person. And then the 12 other lots are being purchased by a group outside of the state of Indiana, a well-known group. They're finalizing all of the details. I think Rob actually has most of the houses that are going to be built and has given permission for those. They're getting ready to fill out application. We need a site report from them before we give the permit, and we should be getting that in the next couple days. And when all that occurs, then they're going to start building pretty much right away. The cost of these homes are going to run somewhere between $230,000 to $300,000. I think it's in a pretty good price range for the average individuals, because that's about what it is now. And these homes will be built by a group out of Florida National Homes, and they're all really, really nice homes that will be built. So excited about it. Talked to one of the guys, the directors today, told them how much I appreciated them taking an interest in our community, building homes that we most generally really need to have. And we look forward to working with them through the process. So that should be kicking in real, real soon. The last thing is, is we're still marching towards a development on the east side. They'll be coming to the BZA in January. They got a few variances that they'll have to be granted, and if they do, then there'll be another business starting up out by the high school on some properties out there that is either being purchased or being looked at being purchased. And we'll get more information as we get ready to go to the BZA in January.
Okay, sounds good.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Parks Department. So what do you have for us tonight, Ryan?
I have a whole lot, just a couple of updates on some things about the Christmas lights and stuff like that. There's been a lot of people concerned about that. We're doing our best to try to keep things going. The snow come in pretty early this year, and we had everything down, and the GFI's keep blowing. We had bad wires on some lights and stuff like that that we've been working on. So I just wanted to give you guys-
That's been a problem we've had every year out there.
We probably need to, in the future, think about getting some new Christmas stuff. So that's about all I have, unless you guys have some.
We probably don't know anything on collections yet, or how that's going, donations. And I see a lot of people out there volunteering, so that's great.
Yeah.
We haven't looked at any totals yet, but we have been seeing money coming in. The park staff is taking care of that every day, and we do have some electronic transfers through Venmo coming in as well. through Venmo coming in as well.
Saturdays, Friday and Saturday was really good, they said, they had three, I think, three bags one day and three the other, so.
Yeah, the, the bank did say they had quite a bit.
Yes.
Turned in for, over the weekend, so.
And the soup kitchens open.
Every day but Monday.
Yep. Yep, and I think she has our menu on
She does.
Social media, so that's another good thing. Did you want to talk to us just a little bit about, tonight, we're going to go to the council on some transfers on funding.
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but.
And we're hoping that if that passes through, that he will be able to get a gator with a blade and
Salt spreader.
Salt spreader, so that they can, they've been helping the street department, I think, downtown, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because before, it was always, we could get to the downtown after they had the streets cleared, well, now we're thinking, if we could get that, and you do Prairie Creek Park, you're trying to keep the park
Up here.
Better, you know, the
Neighborhood Center.
Yeah, Neighborhood Center.
And our park.
Yeah, Old Stony, and so they have the money in their budget, they just need a transfer, so, and also, they're looking at the purchase of a
Pickup truck.
Pickup truck, because they have one truck that
Needs to be retired.
Yeah.
That's about to fall off of it, it's not in very good shape.
Yeah.
So.
Not a lot of value to it, so.
Yeah, the gator, we, we used Brian's spare one that he had this last snowstorm, plus ours, and then, plus my pickup truck, and we went around and did everything, started like four in the morning, we were done with everything up here, uptown, all around, and the main park, clear through the main park, all the parking lots, and we were done by nine o'clock in the morning. So that worked out really well.
That's good.
If we could just get another one, I think we'll be pretty set to help him out and help us out, and make our parks look better instead of being snow in the, you know, driving through, I mean, that's
Well, we appreciate you cleaning Old Stony off, that's good, thank you. And the downtown businesses as well, that's, that's good, that we can get that done a little earlier than before, because they were having to wait, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
That'd be it, so it's right.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Kimberly, community development.
Hello. I don't really have any, I don't really have anything tonight, the, the one thing I do want to note is tomorrow is Muffins with the Mayor, and we are at our new location and our new time, so we are at the library, and we will be starting at nine o'clock instead of 8:30, due to the library's operating hours, so we'll be at the Harry's Coffee Shop in the lower level.
All right.
So department heads don't forget, and I see Scott's not here, so we'll have to remind him, so.
All right, other than that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, attorney, Alicia, what do you have for us?
I am still working on getting some quotes from the appraisers for the old police station, I actually got them, I have them, I just forgot them, so I will bring them next time, I also have information on what we need to do regarding, we had talked about that 455 Washington Street property, and what we need to do to sell that, I have that all done too, but I also forgot that, so next week, or next time, I will have a lot more information for you, and then I also will have the CCMG docs ready to go then, to working with Brian on that, so a lot of promises, but no actual documents today, so sorry about that.
So the CCMG, when does that have to be completed? March 1st, okay.
Yeah, so we're hoping to, yeah, we're hoping to get it under contract by February 1st, so the goal would be that we would get the documents to you for approval at the next meeting, we would get it published in the newspaper, and by the first or second meeting in January, we'd be able to get the bids in for that, depending on the timing of the newspaper publication.
We appreciate all your hard work on that.
You're welcome, I'm glad to.
And Brian and Kimberly, thank you, because I know that has not been easy for the CCMG, thank you so much, it's very beneficial to our city. We couldn't nearly do the paving without it. Okay, unfinished business, we have the job description, and I believe
So last meeting, you all approved the position as a new hire, but we did not specifically address the job description in the minutes, since I felt like we needed to have that in the minutes, it was sort of a broad motion, so I wanted a specific motion just for this actual job description, just to cover our bases.
And I think you're working on setting up some interviews, and you're getting applications, correct, and this would take effect January 1st.
I'll make a motion that we approve the job description as presented for the communications administrative specialist.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Okay, you have the approval on that, Kimberly?
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, then next, we have a conflict of interest for Ryan Edgar.
So I believe Ryan's been doing some work for snow removal for the park and the city, so we wanted to make sure he submitted this to, again, cover our bases.
Yep. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the conflict of interest disclosure statement in regards to Ryan Edgar for snow removal.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Okay, that's been approved. Do we have anything else under new or old business, Cheryl, do you have anything?
I just wanted to discuss possible December 29th meeting, our next scheduled meeting is the 22nd, which still gives us about a week left of business in the year, just in case we would have something come up that need, needed last minute approval, maybe we could tentatively put that on our calendars as an extra meeting for the month.
Would we still meet on the 22nd?
We would still meet on the 22nd, if we did do a December 29th meeting, it would be incredibly short and sweet, just to take care of whatever piece of business was necessary. So if you could keep that on your radar.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds good, anything else? Okay, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you everyone for being here.